Before we begin, we, the Greater Shepparton City Council, begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture, and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Please note that this council meeting is being streamed live and recorded in accordance with the council's live streaming and recording of council meetings policy. All care is taken to maintain your privacy. However, as a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in the public gallery, it is assumed your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast. For more information, the policy is available on the Greater Shepparton City Council's website. Do you have any apologies, councillors?
Mr Mayor, I'll move that the apologies from councillor Orisvari and councillor Summard be noted and a leave of absence be granted.
Thank you. Do I have a second, eh? Dennis Patterson, thank you councillor Patterson. You don't have to speak to it, councillor Patterson. All in favour? Carried? Do we have any declarations of conflicts of interest, councillors? None? Thank you. Confirmed the minutes of the previous meeting. There's a recommendation there on page one. Do I have a councillor wishing to move that recommendation as a motion?
I'll move it, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Giovinetti, a second please. Councillor O'Keefe. Councillor Giovinetti, do you wish to speak to that? Councillor O'Keefe, no councillor wishing to speak to or for that? No. All in favour of the motion? Carried. Item six point one is the St Mari Busha Memorial, proposed site location. Do I have a councillor wishing to move any motions relevant to that? Councillor Sutton.
I'll move that motion.
As printed on page two?
Page two.
Do I have a second please? Councillor Giovinetti. Councillor Sutton, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, I'd like to speak to this motion. The committee has looked at various locations around Shepparton and they've decided they would like to rescind this previous motion because they believe there's a better place to put it and accept the proposed location of Monash Park because it's closer to the War Memorial and it's in keeping with this area. So, that's what I'd like to do.
Good, thank you. Councillor Giovinetti, would you like to add any comments?
Basically what councillor Sutton has already mentioned, but also that the family of St Mari Busha also agree with the change in the location, so I think that's an important factor as well.
Okay. Any other councillors wishing to speak against this motion? Any councillors wishing to speak for the motion?
I'd like to quickly speak, thank you. I think it's quite amazing, the history of this St Mari Busha. He was dedicated like horseman in the First World War, of course. He was deputy premier of Victoria from 1920 to 1930. He was a Victorian agent general in London in 1936. He had a very distinguished career and held lots of positions in government authorities after the war, so he was knighted in 1938. So it is very important that we recognise people that have had a big input in our history, and this is certainly one that will be great to see the statue of.
Good, thank you councillor Patterson. Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against this motion?
Yes, Mr Mayor. The original decision from the committee proposing this memorial indicated the preferred site was going to be in the Queen's Gardens, but when it got to the point of looking at the scale, you know, the size of the statues, it certainly wasn't going to be appropriate in the Queen's Gardens. So they've relooked at that proposal and came up with Monash Park. And of course, in the process, updating of the Monash Park master plan will need to be undertaken to incorporate the location of the statue. That will of course then provide an opportunity for public comment in respect to that new master plan. And any member of the public who is particularly keen to see what the statue's going to look like, they're on display in our foyer area and have been for some time.
Good, thank you councillor Hazelman. Councillor Sutton, any other councillor, sorry, wishing to speak for or against? Councillor Sutton, any closing comments? All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we have a recommendation on page nine. In respect to the contract one six nine three, Fraser, no, I've gone past. Page six, this fluke is really... Sorry, page six councillors. Proposed closure of part of Court Bowl, a butting lot, thirty mile road driving, Kailar. Do I have a councillor wishing to move the recommendation as a motion?
I'll move it, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Patterson, do I have a second, eh? Councillor Hazelman, councillor Patterson?
Yes, this is a change of plan from Mulberry Drive. Basically, the end of Mulberry Drive, it's a very big balloon at the end of it, it's a roundabout, and the new development that's going out there, it needs to have a few slight adjustments to it, and this will allow the new estate to continue on and build through there. So it's only very minor and all the locals are more than happy with it.
Good. Councillor Hazelman.
Entering the ministry procedure, Mr Mayor, and submissions are being sought. The point of debate about the pros and cons will come to the fore when any of those submissions come back and be considered by council. So, yeah, let it go out, let the community have their comments on it. And I think I agree with councillor Patterson, it'll be a fairly straightforward process.
Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Any councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Patterson, any closing comments? All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Now, item six point three. The contract one six nine three, Fraser Street toilets redevelopment, the awarding of the contracts. Councillors, there's a recommendation on page nine. Do I have any councillor wishing to move this recommendation as the motion? Councillor Giovinetti? Do I have a second, eh?
I'll take it, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Patterson? Councillor Giovinetti?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There's been quite a bit of conjecture about the cost of this particular project, both in the press and around the streets of Shepparton. I recall several years ago, I was involved with a group of people with a significant disability who wrote to council urging them to ensure that there were adequate toilet facilities available within the city of Greater Shepparton CBD. And this is the outcome from that particular discussion, as well as the CBD redevelopment plan. The cost is high, but because of the specialised nature of some of the facilities that are going in there, that's the reason behind the higher than normal price. When I say higher than normal, it does compare favourably with the cost per square metre of other toilet facilities that have been constructed in recent times within the city of Greater Shepparton. And I think it will be a significant benefit to the population of the city when they utilise the Maud Street and CBD areas.
Good, thank you councillor. Councillor Patterson?
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to add, councillor Giovinetti?
Giovinetti.
I can get that.
Giovinetti.
Only said the million times. I know some of the comments in the media about spending that much money and, you know, we're not having got our priorities right for the Mel. Well, to me, the first thing the Mel needs is a decent set of toilets. These aren't just toilets, the Beesnose toilets, there's $110,000 provided by the state government for the disability side of things. So they are really our, if you could say it, they are our leading set of toilets in Shepparton. They have to be good. And I think these people that are criticised would be criticising us again if we did a cheap job. They'd be still on to us. So I think we're doing the right thing. It is a lot of money, for sure, but there is a lot of earthworks underneath and pipework has to be changed, so there's rationale behind that. We weren't completely convinced at last meeting, that's why I was left to the table. And as councillors, I believe, have done due diligence on that and looked at all those figures, and I'm now happy to second this. I think, as I said, you know, you probably won't attract a lot of people to the Mel with a good set of toilets, but you'll send a lot of people away with a bad set. So I think it's important we do this right when we do it, because there's no use sinking down track five years. We should have done it properly and done a good set when we're doing it. So I believe we're doing the right thing.
Okay, thank you councillor Patterson. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion?
I'll speak in favour of the motion.
In a moment, you will.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I do absolutely agree that the Fraser Street toilets are in desperate need of work, there's no doubt about that. And the public do deserve to have, you know, a much better facility. However, my objection is going over the budget in such a huge way, being at least $151,000 above the estimate. I just find that, you know, really hard to understand how we could get that figure way above our estimate. So, look, I feel we need to absolutely do something. Do we go to this level of cost? I'm still trying to justify that. I just simply feel that perhaps we need to revisit this and see what our options could be. I just find it really hard to perhaps accept that this, we could go that far over our estimate.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you. Just a few comments. One of the common complaints from shoppers and visitors in Shepparton CBD has been the lack of decent public toilet facility, the one that caters to the needs of people with all abilities and their caregivers. There has been a strong demand for an improved public toilet in the CBD, and the current toilet facility in Fraser Street offers limited features. As I understand, it was refurbished five years ago and is now at a stage where the existing building cannot support the additional infrastructure required. Hence, the plan is to demolish the current toilet building and construct a brand new toilet building in Fraser Street. Fraser Street redevelopment, toilet redevelopment is consistent with the overall CBD redevelopment strategy that aims to revive economic activity and bring more shoppers and visitors in the CBD. Having a high quality, attractive and all-inclusive public toilet building in a high-profile CBD location will only complement the redevelopment of CBD and rejuvenation of Maud Street Mall. On surface, yes, it looks expensive. It's an expensive project on surface. However, there are certain aspects of the project that must be taken into account when comparing its cost with that of any other toilet, or public toilet for that matter. Some of those aspects include, number one, building a toilet for private or residential use is different from building a public toilet that has to adhere to a range of public safety regulations and quality standards. Also, when we think about the dollar amount required in building toilets for private use, certain costs like personal supervision cost or project management cost, they are not taken into account, whereas the public toilet construction cost such as this one does include these cost items. So obviously, any cost comparison between a private and public toilet construction could be misleading and is not comparable, I understand. Number two, the proposed Fraser Street public toilet is not just a standard accessible toilet, as noticed by my fellow councillors. It's a rather high-end toilet facility that includes features such as changing places, toilet and parents' room, including feeding room, a toilet and baby change facilities. Standard accessible toilets do not meet the needs of all, and, you know, changing places toilets are different to standard accessible toilets in that they have extra features and hence extra costs. I also understand that the scope includes demolition of our current toilet building, hence an additional cost element is there. And a rather restricted site access for demolition and construction is another unique feature of this toilet project, hence another evidence of the overall cost going up. I think the Fraser Street toilets facility in CBD will cater to the people...
Councillor Abdullah, would you like an extension of time?
Two minutes would be good, thank you.
It is extension, and we're all in favour of that. Continue.
See, the only thing is that the Fraser Street toilet facility in CBD will cater to people with all abilities, which is so important. And it is, you know, the $110, $10K changing places fund has to be used within this current financial year, as I understand, so if it's not built, we'll perhaps lose that as well. And, you know, that's, I think that's the main thing, that I'm in favour of that because of all these reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Sutton, sorry councillor Hazelman, you're beaten to the...
I've just agreed with you, Seema and Dennis and Bruce. I realise it's a very costly project, but I think this type of facility is required for many, and if we don't build it now, we're going to lose that money, so I'm in agreement with the recommendation.
Thank you. Any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion, councillor Hazelman?
At the previous council meeting, I actually moved that we defer consideration of this item until this meeting because I had a number of questions I wanted to answer for myself. One of them, obviously being around the price, were we getting value for money, cost benefit, all that, and the actual need? And I think by getting some of those questions answered, that it's the pricing per metre is commensurate with other constructions that have been undertaken to produce public toilets. Is there a need? I consistently hear people around Shepparton over the last number of years bemoaning the lack of quality toilets in our central business district, and on occasion being very critical of some of the toilets that are in operation, many of which are private and not council. But that gets lost in the story. Are we getting benefit? Yes, I believe we are. I think we are getting actual quality product. And I'm also very mindful that the grant that we received, that's been renegotiated a couple of times around this project, has the potential to be lost if we want to move in a different direction. Look, and no doubt, the council will get criticised on the expenditure, but then the council gets criticised on every level of expenditure, so this won't be any different. But I think what we are going to see is that in our CBD, as the community and patrons in the CBD have been asking for for a long time, we are going to produce a very good quality public facility for the usage.
Good, thank you councillor Hazelman. There's no one left to speak anyway. Now, we've all gone through. Councillor Giovinetti, would you like any closing comments?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't really need to make any too many closing comments because I think it's been very well summed up by all the other councillors who have spoken. I do take on board councillor O'Keefe's concern relating to the cost blowout from the estimate to the final price, and I think that that is something that council needs to be cognisant of, and also to ensure that in the future, the estimates that are provided to councillors are as accurate as what they can possibly be.
Indeed. That being said, all in favour of the motion? Against?
So please call it a vision, Mr Mayor.
Aye. Declare the motion carried first, and then, all in favour again, please? Councillor Sutton, councillor Giovinetti, councillor Hazelman, councillor Adam, councillor Abdullah, councillor Patterson. Against, councillor O'Keefe. Next item is six point... Not six point at all. Point four, sorry. We've got the, yeah. Contract one seven five two, Old Wicky Road upgrade between Drummond Road and Doyle's Road in Shepparton. Do I have a councillor wishing to move the recommendation on page fourteen? Please?
Mr Mayor, I'll move the recommendation printed on page fourteen of the agenda.
Do I have a second, please? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Hazelman?
I think this is a fantastic project because for one of our major east-west arterials, this has been a major blight for a number of years. That section of road, for a lot of people, the volumes of traffic that it carries on a daily basis, it's not up to the standard you would anticipate in a major provincial city. This work has been long overdue, and very pleasing to see that it's got to this stage now and will be constructed at the standard that that road actually deserves. And without wanting to go over old sores and raise old issues, no doubt, this major upgrade of that road is going to increase the volumes of traffic on that road, and by extension will significantly increase the volumes of traffic that will use Andrew Fairley Avenue. Will provide the final nail in the coffin for those who aspire to replace it.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Councillor Patterson?
Yes, I totally support councillor Hazelman's comments. I think there's 8,000 vehicles use that road every day, and 11% of them are heavy vehicles, and that will only increase with Pacman expanding their output. His comments regarding Seren Guffaley Avenue, I think, very pertinent. That's going to become very important and it's still open. So, yeah, looking forward to it, having that whole road done. It has really crept up over the years, become a very, very busy thoroughfare, and it needs doing urgently, and it gives us great access to all of the factories down there, great access to the bypass.
Good, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Any other councillor wishing to add further comment, speaking for the motion? Okay, councillor Hazelman, any closing comments?
Yeah, Mr Mayor. Myself and at least one other person in this room regularly uses that road on two wheels, and I think our respective backsides will be much appreciated with this work being done.
Duly noted, councillor Hazelman.
I was introducing something fresh to the discussion.
Yeah, something I'd determined as being fresh. But anyway, all in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Now, item seven point one, on page eighteen, councillors, in regard to the section eighty-six committees of management, membership appointments. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion in relation to the recommendation? Councillor O'Keefe? Do I have a second, eh? Yes? Councillor Patterson? Councillor O'Keefe?
Yeah, look, I just think it's really important that we have the right committees on board, committee of management, and supporting this motion, obviously, to make sure they do get the support they do need. Yeah, that's probably all I need to say on that one.
Very good, councillor Patterson?
Yeah, look, we speak long and hard about our volunteers, we all know we'd be down the gurgle without them, so we've got to appreciate the ones we've got and welcome the ones that are coming along to help.
And thank the ones that have provided years of service as well. Any other councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion, councillor Giovinetti?
Look, I can only reiterate what the other two councillors have mentioned. I think it's fantastic that people are prepared to put up their hand in a voluntary capacity to work on these community committees, and I think that, as councillor O'Keefe indicated before, it's beholden on us as a council to support these groups as much as we possibly can.
Good, thank you. Any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? No. For the motion? None? Good. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like any closing comments?
Just on closing, I have been to a number of events where I have been involved with the volunteers, and I think the council do an amazing job of lifting their spirits and supporting them, and also acknowledging the contribution. So, in closing, I think that's really, really important.
Good, thank you. All in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Item seven point two. We have a recommendation on page twenty-one in regard to the review of community's safety strategy, year two action plan, December 2015 to December 2016. Any councillor wishing to move a motion in relation to the recommendation?
I'll move it, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Do I have a second, please? Councillor O'Keefe? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, this plan was first accepted in December 2014, it's a two-year review. It's been very successful, it's all very selfish lanatory, and it's been great.
Good, councillor O'Keefe? Any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion? Good, councillor Patterson?
I thank you.
Thank you. All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Item seven point eight point one. It is on page twenty-five. Mayor and councillor allowances. Do I have any councillor wishing to move any motions in relation to this? Sorry, just for the information, yes. The background on page twenty-six, councillors, third paragraph down, it begins with the word previously, allowances for category two councils. The word previously should be omitted, and the word currently should be inserted, so it's currently allowances for category two councils proceeds. So, do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion? Just looking in, or any direction councillor Hazelman?
The motion printed on page twenty-five, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Giovinetti? Councillor Hazelman?
Yeah, the Minister for Local Government, back in December, authorised a 2.5% increase in the allowances, which, from my recollection and understanding, the council did adopt at its December council meeting.
It did.
There is a provision, though, that the sections, relevant sections of the Local Government Act, is that public notice of that decision needs to be made, bring this into effect, and the public invited to comment on the council decision. So, this in effect is a fairly administrative sort of process that's giving effect to that public consultation component, and, you know, the verisimo will be in the Shepparton News outlining the intention and inviting public comment, which, if necessary, the council will hold a special council meeting to hear and consider those submissions.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Giovinetti?
I think councillor Hazelman has covered it all very well.
Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? I'm that hard to believe, but if that were the case. Any councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, this is one of the sad times really as a councillor, that the audience didn't get an opportunity to be in the councillor's suite, to see us before the meeting. The sheer joy in the room with our pay rise was just immense. So exciting. One of the councils was kind enough to go down to Travel World and got some travel brochures, and we're all looking at them, and terrific, you know. For once, it really stood out, you know, between the mayor and the councillors. The councils are, you know, looking at the mayor, and he's got his travel brochures of Hawaii and Paris, and we're handing around brochures between Yummerka and Benella. Anyhow, any, any, any little help helps, so we did appreciate it. Thanks God, if we do get it by the good of grace that the people do decide to give it that two and a half percent, it'll be well and truly utilised very well in Yummerka or Benella.
Thank you for your input councillor Patterson. Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against?
Make the comment that I think we should spend the increase within the municipality.
Yes, not Benella.
It will be a telegroup from the white shirt.
It burnt down.
Thank you councillors. Councillor Hazelman, any closing comments? Good, all in favour? Against? Motion carried. Item eight point two, I think, page twenty-eight, the January 2017 monthly financial report. Do I have a councillor wishing to move the motion, a motion? Yes, councillor Giovinetti? Have a second, please? Councillor Sutton? Just to be clear, the motion is that the council receive and note the January 2017 monthly financial report. Councillor Giovinetti?
Well, I think I'll take over from councillor Orisvari as to his normal stance with this particular recommendation.
Easter handball, yes.
And that I'll ask Mr Titzel to perhaps give us an overview of the financial report for the period up to and including end of January.
Mr Titzel, if you will.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and through you to the councillors. If I can refer to the attachments, it starts, I think, on page 111 of the agenda. Operating performance, as reported in previous reports, our rates and charges are recognised in total in advance, and hence the year-to-date actual is, on operating performance, adjusted underlying surplus as a percentage of underlying revenue is quite high. That is, will come down to roughly in line with the adopted forecast, as depicted in that report. The financial health, again because of rates and charges received in advance, now cash balance being reasonably high at this time of year, is running at 312.2%. That again will come back down closer to the normal operating range of somewhere around the 150% or slightly more by the end of the financial year. Financial obligations is showing what our current loan borrowings as a percentage of rates... rates is. Year-to-date actually somewhat lower than the adopted forecast and the adopted budget at this stage, and that's because we took the opportunity to pay down a, a loan that had come out of a fixed interest period into a variable interest period, and we've, will eventually refinance that into a cheaper interest rate at some point in the future. The following page shows a traffic light report, and as discussed in previous council meetings, user charges has continued to be unfavourable against budget, and that's largely due to the, the amount of user charges we've received through the Cosgrove landfill site. At a report item later in this agenda today, you'll, we're recommending that we lower the gate fees to more accurately reflect current market conditions on that pricing. Offsetting some of that reduction in income is a favourable materials and consumables result, and that's due to the lower volumes going into the landfill, we're paying less in EPA levies and some other costs. So it's largely the variances. The capital expenditure at this point in time is tracking pretty similar to next year, and we're confident that we'll get the majority of the capital programme completed by year end.
Thank you, Mr Titzel. Councillor Sutton, do you wish to add anything further?
Thanks Chris. You did good.
Any other councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion?
I'd just like to make a comment, always love when we pay off a loan early. Apart from the fact we're saving interest, it clearly shows that council isn't under any financial stress. It is a really good sign, so, yeah, we do approve of that, so that's a very good point.
Councillor Giovinetti?
I think Mr Titzel has covered things adequately, thank you.
Good, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Now, item eight point three on page thirty councillors, our financial hardship policy, there's a recommendation at the bottom of page thirty, any councillor wishing to move that as a motion? Councillor Patterson, was that your hand? I thought it was, yeah. Second, please, councillor O'Keefe? Councillor Patterson?
Ah, yes, this is, naturally, our financial hardship policy. Unfortunately, I have to use it very often. It's important that it's there so people understand there is somewhere to go if there is issues. There was some talk about reviewing it more regularly, but basically it's the same policy we've had for a while. If we ever decide due to unseen circumstances we need to review, we can review it straight away. So I'm more than happy for four years, we're only creating work for someone unnecessarily by doing it every year or two. So totally support, it's a good policy, it does allow for people getting into hardship, which is what it's all about. You never know who's going to be there, including yourself. So it is important that we look after people that are stressing in this world, and this policy does cover them.
Good, thank you. Councillor O'Keefe?
Councillor Patterson's covered that well, thank you.
Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? No, anyone else speaking for? No, that being the case, councillor Patterson, any closing comments?
No, thank you.
All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Eight point four councillors, on page thirty-four, our council, a council plan progress report, there's a recommendation there, does any councillor wishing just to move that, and I'll just read it out, because I think it's important. The recommendation is that the council note the council plan progress report, December two thousand and sixteen, which provides details in relation to achieving the, two bullet points there, one is the key strategic objectives identified in the council plan between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and seventeen, and key strategic activities contained within the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen budget, which will become council's performance statement. That is the recommendation. Councillor Abdullah, you wish to move that recommendation as the motion? Do I have a second, please? Councillor Giovinetti? Councillor Abdullah, who should speak to it, please?
So, I'd like to move the recommendation on page number thirty-four. This is about the council plan. The four-year council plan contains key strategic objectives and strategies to achieve those objectives. So like any other plan, it is important to regularly measure and track the performance of council plan. Council Plan two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and seventeen is comprehensive and based around five strategic pillars, namely active and engaged community, enhancing the environment, economic prosperity, quality infrastructure, and high performing organisation. So the plan identifies sixteen key objectives that are spread over these five pillars, and for every pillar, there are objectives, and objectives have got strategies, and strategies have got key strategic activities to, to implement those strategies. One of the, for instance, I just want to quote one of the pillars regarding active and engaged community, where there was an objective to continue to enhance community capacity building, and in regards to this objective, the strategy was to develop and implement neighbouring planning within Shepherdon. And the key strategic activity for this strategy was to develop one plan and one locality plan endorsed. Now, how to measure this activity? The measurement of the result was, the measurement was that there were, there was, as George wrote, Plan and Shep East Plan that were endorsed. So, just to give you an example that how this plan works and how a community can progress and track this plan, so those interested community members who want to understand the depth and breadth of council activities, and they also want to track progress of these activities, this progress report is a very good starting point, and hopefully they will be able to find some reasons to appreciate the hard work put together by council in making Greater Shepherdon great. So good work there. Slight areas of improvement, obviously, like any other plan, there can be areas of improvement. Many objectives in this plan are about developing a strategy, for example, develop a strategy that identifies resources needed to attract new business and industry to Greater Shepherdon, to Greater Shepherdon. I think it would be, as going forward or in the next plans, perhaps the aim should be to have, the, the, the plan should have the implementation of recommendations from the strategy, and to have it, have the smart goals kind of thing, to make it more measurable and specific. So, yeah, it's a very good, comprehensive plan, and I think everybody who wants to know what the council is doing, what the hell they are doing, it's all in there, so that's a good one. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Abdullah. Councillor Giovinetti?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, I think councillor Abdullah has summed it up reasonably well. But one of the things that has come out of our planning processes for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and twenty council plan, is that we will be looking at a revised reporting format that's clear and concise, and easily read for members of our community who wish to read it, and I think that's an important part of our, our new plan going forward.
Thank you, indeed. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Any other councillor wishing to add comments for the motion?
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment, thank you. I commend councillor Abdullah for her understanding of the plan so quickly. Probably understands it better than I do, and I've been here four years, and she's only been here a couple of months. The one thing about the current plan, it isn't easy to tick off as we'd like to, and we're addressing that in our new plan, it'll be easier for people to understand, and it'll be easier to go, yes, we've done that, we've completed that, and we've ticked it off. So, yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to that.
Good. Any other councillor wishing to add comment for the motion, or against? And councillor Abdullah, any closing comments?
No further comments, thank you.
Great, all in favour? Against? Motion carried. Item eight point five, councillors. Right, eight point five on page thirty-seven, report on the Greater Shepherdon City Council general elections two thousand and sixteen. Before we, I asked for a, a move of a motion on page thirty-eight councillors, there's a slight typographical error, and the second paragraph under economic impacts, it currently states there are no identified social implications associated with this report, but in fact it should read there are no identified economic implications associated with this report, so please note that. Do I have a councillor wishing to move the recommendation as a motion? Page thirty-seven, which clearly says that the council received the report from the Victorian Electoral Commission in relation to the Greater Shepherdon City Council general elections two thousand and sixteen. Thank you councillor Hazelman, a second, please? Councillor O'Keefe? Councillor Hazelman?
Yeah, this is a, a requirement of the Local Government Act, that the VEC, who were appointed to provide election services to the council of the two thousand and sixteen election, had to provide a report, and you could work through that report and trot our statistic after statistics, but there's a couple that I would like to comment on. The number of ballot papers counted was seventy-seven point seven nine, so almost twenty-five percent of eligible people didn't vote, or were invalid in their vote, compared to the state average of seventy-five point six seven, so we did slightly better than the rest of the state. At the previous election, though, we did record a turnout of eighty percent, so our numbers dropped, and the informal vote, which was predicted would happen, given the circumstances, was eleven point nine nine percent. That was, is with six percent for all post-elections across the state, and at the previous election in two thousand and twelve was nine point five three percent. So in terms of voter participation, typically deteriorated position from the previous election.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Councillor O'Keefe, do you wish to comment? No, any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion?
I think just if I can make one quick comment, I think the reason for the high informal vote was there were so many good selections available.
No doubt, no doubt. Thank you councillor Patterson. Yeah, councillor Hazelman, any closing comments?
Couldn't follow that one.
No, no. All in favour? Against, motion carried. Now, item eight point six councillors, on thirty-nine, the recommendation that the council note the publicly advertised contracts awarded by the chief executive officer under delegated authority and tenders that have been advertised but not yet awarded. Do I have a councillor wishing to move that recommendation as the motion? Before I do, just let me just make another correction. On the page thirty-nine, first paragraph that says tendered contracts awarded under delegated authority by the CEO, in the one, two, fifth column, it's, has morsing constructions listed as awarded to, in fact, it's NL drainage, so please make that correction councillors. Any councillor wishing to move the motion? Councillor Giovinetti? Second, please? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Giovinetti?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As you indicated earlier, this recommendation is to, um, authorize the contracts that have been awarded under delegation, and also the requests for tenders that have gone out and as yet have not been received. Standard process under our delegations policy.
Puts up? Thank you. Thank you councillor Giovinetti. Councillor Patterson?
I think councillor Giovinetti covered it very well.
Anything, any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? None? Any other councillor wishing to speak for? Back to you councillor Giovinetti.
I don't think there's any need for further comment, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, all in favour? Against, motion carried. Councillors, we have an item in relation to the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen quarter to forecast review. Here it is, on page forty-two, forty-three, all the way to page forty-five. Further councillor wishing to move that rather lengthy recommendation as the motion? Councillor Patterson? Councillor O'Keefe? Thank you, councillor Patterson?
Um, there's realistically in this recommendation, there's enough to run about two council meetings on, if we're split up, probably how it should be, so it's more understanding. The parts I really do like about it is the fact that we now have a, in our parks, in open space, we have the opportunity to cha- charge market stall holders a hundred dollars instead of a considerable amount more for your, your lines, clubs, your rugby clubs that are actually generating funds for the community. I salute that, and that is really good. There is lots and lots of charges and fees that have changed here, you really have to read through to understand them, some have been taken away and put back in different forms to make it clearer. Cosgrove, as we, we know, there's, there's been some issues there, there is a section here that will hopefully allow us to become more competitive. You could nearly say there's rubbish wars going on at present, and we need to be fully armed and ready to go. This gives us the freedom to attack, so to speak, when we need to, and defend when we need to. So I'd encourage anyone that has an interest in our fees and charges to really have a good look, write through it. Lots of different amendments, the planning applications, et cetera, very complicated, all understandably correct, and, yeah, I fully support it.
You, councillor O'Keefe?
Yes, look, I agree with that, and also, obviously, the not-for-profit organisations are becoming much stronger in our region due to so much fundraising needed, so I think this is a great step in that direction to really make sure it's affordable for them to run these type of events.
Good, thank you councillor O'Keefe. Any councillor wishing to speak against the motion? Anyone wishing to add further comments for the motion? No, back to you councillor Patterson?
No, thank you, all been to.
Been said, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. Item nine point one on page fifty-two councillors, recommendation is that the council note the planning permit, VCAT, development hearing panel and enforcement file information detailed in this report. Do I have a councillor wishing to move that recommendation as the motion? Your arm's getting a bit of a workout tonight.
Those are my boys.
Second, please? Councillor Hazelman? Councillor Patterson?
Ah, yes, this is good news. When you read through it, it's to do with the VCAT claims, and also the performers basically of our planning department. Last year, December one, we had, what was it, two hundred and thirty-four planning applications, and this year we had two hundred and sixty-one. Number of days to decide that last year was two hundred and thirty-two, this year, uh, was two hundred and fifty-seven, this year was two hundred and thirty-two, and average days to have the whole work done was forty-two days this year, compared to forty-seven last year. So there's a direct improvement, there's mention of a few VCAT hearings there, which both have supported in generally council's decision. There'll always be some for and some against, it's out of our control, but, you know, they do a good job, so I'd like to congratulate the planning department on their, their effort, they're really making a dip. They come into a lot of, a lot of criticism, but people don't realise that when they put an application in, and they might think it takes four weeks to get back to us, well, we send it out to the referral agencies, and we can't issue a permit, or we receive the reply back from all those referral agencies. So if one of those agencies is slow, we can't issue the plan, permit, and we get the bling. So, you know, the guys have done a good job, gratulat.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Hazelman?
Only to repeat that it is a very, very good news story. We've, we've exceeded our performance from the previous year, which in itself was very good. The clear evidence is that the, the council's planning function has been supported, almost without exception, at VCAT, and that, very positive outcome for our, our planning department. And also indicating in there through, it's been maligned at some point, points the issues of how the DHP works, and that's, yeah, work over the, over the coming months. So I think it demonstrates that through our planning department, we are providing a, a quality of service that is probably better than most around the state.
Hazelman, any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For? Back to you councillor Patterson again. No comments? All in favour, please? Against, motion carried. Item nine point two councillors, on page fifty-nine, amendment C one nine five, investigation area three, rezoning to the urban growth zone, consideration of submissions. So do I have a councillor wishing to move that motion?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I'll move the recommendation, printed on page fifty-nine of the agenda.
Councillor Hazelman, a second, please? Councillor O'Keefe? Councillor Hazelman?
Yes, Mr Mayor, it wouldn't be my intention to debate the pros and cons of all the elements of the amendment, that's, that's not the purpose. This is simply... This is simply a process, one of many that will occur. We've had an investigation area with a recommendation adopted by council to move towards a planning scheme amendment. That amendment is now underway. It's a public process, all affected residents have the opportunity to put some forward. This is a very simple initial process about rezoning to the urban growth zone and the consideration of submissions. It's not about a public acquisition overlay, it's not about other aspects or development plans or contribution plans from developers or anything like that. It is simply designating that area as an urban growth zone. And people exercising their rights, being able to place submissions and the formal process for those submissions is to an independent planning panel who will then assess those and make a report back to council. That's probably at the point when council needs to involve in the debate on the merits, pros and cons or whatever.
Thank you councillor. Councillor O'Keefe? Any councillor wishing to speak against? For the motion? Back to you councillor Hazelman.
Excellent.
All been said, all in favour? Against, motion carried. Page 72 of your agendas, councillors, item 9.3, landscape plan guide, the recommendation is regarding endorsing and releasing for public comment. So councillors, councillor Abdullah, would you like to move that motion?
Yeah, I would like to move the recommendation on page number 72 regarding the landscape plan guide for landscapes in the agricultural floodplains.
Do I have a second to please? Second, councillor Givenetti, councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to this motion?
Yep, it's a good start. It's the landscape plan guide is going to assist those applying for planning permit and it's, three councils have contributed to this guide. This is not for domestic purpose, it's for commercial space only. It's good to have a standardised approach across these councils and it was a collaborative effort to develop the document, Shepparton being the procurement leader, as I understand. And guidelines have produced a template for commercial use and enforcement of the landscape plan to make it mandatory to go to the landscape planners is part of that guide. And guide preparation was done in consultation with the experts, subject matter experts, political experts and others. So yes, so it's a very good step to have this kind of guide available to, of course, to mitigate the risk of having any confusions and lack of standardisation across the municipality in terms of landscape.
Thank you councillor.
Thanks.
Councillor Givenetti?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We received a very detailed landscape plan guide from staff and it just goes to show the various options that people have when they are planning developments. Myself as the keen gardener that I am, probably didn't need to get much past page one because gardening and landscaping for me, if it doesn't involve a mower, whipper, snapper or round-up, it's probably not in my vocabulary, but I think the guide was actually extremely well done and congratulations to the staff.
Councillor Givenetti, any other councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion?
Just one quick comment, the three councils have done a great job here, the consultant, they've really taken note of disease-bearing trees, which is very important in our neighbourhood.
Indeed it is.
So that was a really good move.
Good, thank you councillor Patterson. Any other councillor wishing to speak against or for the motion? Good, councillor Abdullah, any closing comments?
No further comments, thanks.
That being the case, all in favour of the motion? Against, motion carried. In almost similar vein, item 9.4 on page 76, councillors, it's our climate adaptation plan. Do I have a councillor wishing to move a motion in relation to the recommendation on page 76? Councillor O'Keefe, a second to please? Sir Sutton, was that your, yeah, thank you, councillor Sutton. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to?
All pretty straightforward, just obviously having a climate plan that pretty much works with our environment. Yeah, pretty much it's pretty straightforward.
Good, thank you councillor Sutton, would you like to add further comment?
I'll just say there's been risk workshops undertaken and they've clarified what they need to do, so they've done a very good job with this.
Good, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Okay, councillor O'Keefe, any closing comments? Nothing to add? That being the case, all in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Item 9.5, Shepparton Railway Precinct Master Plan, endorse and release for public comment. Councillors, on page 82, we have a recommendation. Do we have a councillor wishing to move that as a motion? Councillor Hazelman?
That is to me.
Thank you. A second to please? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Hazelman?
A very brief comment, a one-sentence comment. You did say it was a draft master plan that forms part of the Shepparton CBD revitalisation project as a priority project. There's a range of partners and funding sources that have been identified there who have contributed towards this, but the most critical part of the motion is that the draft plan is being released for public comment and we will receive a response to that and with those comments, no doubt we'll be able to then produce a final plan.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson?
A just quick comment, our forefathers made two mistakes when they started to work on Shepparton. They turned their back on the river and they turned their back on the railway station. We can't really reverse the river as much as we can the railway station, but over time both of those will be corrected, I believe. So I'd encourage people to have a read of this strategy and have an input.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak for? Back to you councillor Hazelman for a final comment? None? All in favour? Against, motion carried. Okay, councillors, that was the end of our normal items, so we're up to item 10, am I correct, Peter? On page 91, table of motions, there is none. Reports from council delegates to other bodies, there is none. Reports from special committees and advisory committees, nil. Notice of motions amended or rescission motions, none as well. Documents for signing and sealing, nil. Item 15.1 on page 93, we have a recommendation in regard to the councillors' community interaction and briefing programme. Have a councillor wishing to move that motion? Councillor Givenetti? Second to please. Councillor O'Keefe? Councillor Givenetti?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The recommendation itself is quite straightforward, but it is interesting to note as a new councillor, the number of meetings that councillors are required to attend are more considerable than what I had ever first envisaged and it just goes to show that people see the role of a councillor as often as being one of someone making a decision, but that's probably only half or probably only quarter of the job really. Being involved in the various committees and groups that are within the Greater Shepparton City Council is a quite an onerous task and we're just looking at the number of meetings here and I didn't add them up, but there'd probably be something like about 70 to 80 meetings that we've attended over the past month. So it's interesting, as I say, for a new councillor to just see the breadth of the work that is involved in the role.
Thank you councillor. Councillor O'Keefe?
Thanks, Mr Mayor, yeah, absolutely support councillor Givenetti there. I think this is a little bit of an indicator to the public, I mean, it's nowhere near, obviously, within the four years alone, 12 months of what councillors are involved in. I will say, as a new councillor, it's part of the experience, the positive experience of being on council is having that opportunity to get out amongst the community and from my point of view, also learning such a different perspective of our community, so it's a wonderful thing to be part of this.
Thank you councillor. Any councillor wishing to speak against this? None? Any councillor wishing to add further comments for the motion? None? Councillor Givenetti?
Would you like to?
All in favour? Against, motion carried. Item 16.1 is the assemblies of councillors. Sorry councillors, just so you know, item 16.1 wasn't listed in the index at the front of the agenda, but it is in the body. Moment councillors, will I find the page where the recommendation is printed? 90, sorry, 104? Yes. Councillor, note the record of assemblies of councillors. So do I have a councillor wishing to move that? Councillor Givenetti? A second to please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Givenetti?
Ah, Mr Mayor, that's all pretty self-explanatory to be perfectly honest.
It is indeed. Councillor Sutton? Any councillor wishing to speak against? For? No closing comments, councillor Givenetti?
Ah, no, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, all in favour? Patterson, are you in favour or against?
Ah, yes, I was just considering whether I was or not.
Right. Against? And motion carried. Item 17, urgent, another business? Thank you. Public question time. Mr Harriet?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have two questions today from Mr John Gray and John's in the audience, so welcome, John. John's first question, as I recall, when the Victorian Government Authority, succeeding the previous Vic Urban, has completed the planned development and sale of council-owned Parkside Gardens residential allotments, a sum of $1 million will be paid to council. What is the current state of play in this protracted project and what steps, including local promotion, is council taking to expedite the timely conclusion of this agreement? Response, in 2002, council entered into an agreement with Urban Regional Land Corporation, now Places Victoria, for the development of the land at Parkside. As part of the agreement, Places Victoria undertook all the costs of the development, advertising and sales, with council to receive 10.95% of the net sale proceeds. At the time the agreement was entered into, it was anticipated that council would receive in excess of $1 million. However, the development deed stated that council would receive a guaranteed minimum of $662,000. The sale of land had been slow with one or two properties being sold each year. In May 2014, Places Victoria had the blocks revalued by the valuer general's office and council agreed to reduce the price of the blocks in line with that valuation. Since then, sales have been steadily increasing and to date this financial year, Places Vic have sold nine properties. As each property is sold, council receives payment of the 10.95%, so there is no lump sum payment at the end of the project. Council will continue to work with Places Victoria until the completion of this project. Question two, more than two years ago, a clumsy, these are John's words, clumsy and ultimately unsuccessful attempt was made to close a highly trafficked carriageway in Shepparton. The process cost council tens of thousands of dollars in consultants and legal expenses, whereas if the municipality had had a cost-neutral road closure policy, such as in the municipalities like Melbourne, Geelong and Wodonga, the process would have saved that unnecessary expenditure. Has any progress, not discounting sensible plagiarism, been made to rectify this situation? Response, yeah, thanks, John, for that question. Circumstances, the circumstances surrounding the proposed closure of Andrew Fairley Avenue were driven by an urgent request from the, or both the state government and NSPC to secure over $100 million in investment in jobs and growth for one of Shepparton's largest employers. The urgency of the request required council to act quickly to instigate the statutory requirements to signal its intent to close the road, which in turn triggered the requirement for public consultation. A road closure policy such as the ones referred to in your question would have delivered very little value due to the urgency of the matter being considered. As previously advised, John, council does not currently have a road closure policy but may develop one in the medium term as part of other asset rationalisation strategies. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Harriet. Confidential management reports, nothing. Item 19.1, designation of confidential information reports attached, we have a recommendation on page 105.
Happy to move that, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hazelman, do I have a second to? Councillor Givenetti? Councillor Hazelman?
If I may, Mr Mayor.
If I may, councillor Givenetti?
I have no confidence, Mr Mayor, I can't speak.
Speak, but anyway, that's fine, that's good. Any other councillor wishing to speak against this motion? None? For the motion? We're out of the meeting for another minute. Get away councillor Hazelman. That being the case, all in favour? Against? Motion carried. Thank you councillors, that brings us to the end of the meeting. So thank you for your attendance.